I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting. Call this meeting to order and we'll start with the flag salute, please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have a roll call, please.
Leslie here. Paul Beagle.
President.
Katie here. Junior.
Here.
Isaac here. Brenda here.
Here. So it looks like we have a forum, we have everyone present. No excuse absence, we'll go right down to general discussion, which is our city council goals and the direction we want to go as a council.
So I've asked Barry to, in my notes to you, I asked him to, well, quickly with you as a city council, if you, if the appeal comes all the way up to you, what the process would be from the planning commission, so you'll kind of hurry in.
Oh.
Well, I want you guys to understand that if probably the planning commission, I assume will be sending this to the, to you, and probably it'll go farther than that.
Did they vote on it?
No, what happened is the attorneys from Tommy Brooks from, represents, U E C from Cable Houston, and Wendy Callington are doing what they call a seven seven seven. Wendy Callington then has seven days to respond to the comments were received in hearing last Wednesday night. Then Tommy Brooks has seven days to respond to entirety of the testimony that was received. And then he gets seven more days to get his time open. So they're trying, Wendy Callington's trying to work out something, trying to get the Umatilla Electric, City Boardman, and the Mormons to sit down again, together, which is getting fruitless, so. Because it's public record, if you go back to the planning commission meeting on the eighth, all of the information that they've sent, all the testimony is online, so you can take a look at it and see kind of what the things have been being said are all about. And I believe it will go to the council. And if you don't find them favorable, Wendy threatened us today with going straight to Luba. Some of the plans they're making, that it doesn't need underground control, wiring control ordinance, well, it's a 230 K B line. Takes about 10 to 15 times as much money to build it. They don't want the big of 100 foot tall, well, they got 130 foot tall communications tower on their property. Very first thing they ever put on their property. And Wendy Callington is, because they've appealed the Glenn partition decision, that dedicated a 60 foot right away for the western road, she says we can't start on that road. The city can't fill the road.
Road for on the, on the side.
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I'm got curious about the word threaten, she's threatening of what, just go farther.
Go to Luba, go right straight to Luba.
Okay, and what's Luba?
Land use board of appeals.
Okay, and.
It's like, it's like the first round of court.
Okay, so they're fighting, so basically they're appealing the decision of Umatilla Electric build it online, that's what they're.
And the Glenn's partition request.
So Glenn's changed his mind, is that what it is?
No. He's partitioned, gave a 60 foot right away for the road, and 100 foot power to U E C.
Oh, and they're, they're appealing that, that that shouldn't be allowed.
Yes.
Okay.
Even though it's on it.
Correct.
Because I read the report, or the findings from U E C from last year, I think, on all of the, all of the stuff that they did as far as what they did to be able to get the process and how it was approved by the state, is that correct?
Organized by U C,
What's U C?
Public Utilities Commission. Basically, granted a certificate of public convenience and necessity. And that allows for condemnation of property.
So basically, it, it, if it goes past, they just, that's their last step, is the.
Well, they can take it all the way to Luba or Circuit Court, but.
Which is basically for law.
It, it's throwing, it's throwing sand in the, in the transmission.
Well, it takes a lot longer, it takes the time element. Nobody needs to start their jobs and do their work until this plays out. So you're gonna get a lot of attorney bills, and you're going to get a waste of time. So I think that, what I was hoping is that when you do an appeal, like the other night, you, you have to open it up to the public, you know, for comment and all that.
To, to anybody that has seen.
Yes.
They commented during the, during, after the public notification, during the comment period. So they established standing, and they're the only ones that can testify in the hearing, from your view.
So, so if, when it comes to you, it will be in a tense meeting, I, I would tell you, why I wanted to bring this up. This is not just a, like, oh, hum. This is going to be, I mean, there was enough lawyers the other night on there, that this is an important decision, and so if it gets appealed to you, I feel comfortable, since she's already threatening Luba, that it would be on your agenda right away.
Aren't we already made a decision? Aren't we already in a, knowing what we're gonna do?
You're making me stutter.
I don't mean to, I'm just like, okay, bring it here, we already decided what we want to do. Share your information and go on and do what you need to do.
Well, don't say, don't say that, don't.
I, I mean.
During, during the seven seven seven, there's a lot of interaction between attorneys. And we'll see if they can bring anything out. Tommy Brooks is a pretty damn good lawyer himself.
Okay, and he represents who?
U D O Attorney.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, so the second thing on your list tonight is the county commission, at their meeting last week, they discussed the forming official, and so their, their proposal, they told, asked Tamara to go out for a R F P. So I've asked Glenn to come here tonight because I think it's in our best interest to rethink this a bit. And so, okay, are you ready, Glenn?
Yeah, so I didn't get this in the packet, but I put it on everybody's.
I would like for you to take that, relate it by your desk, your table, I'd like for you to look at.
So it says regarding Building Department Services, and I can just give you a rundown of this. I might bring those all to you, sure, but basically, staff gave the V O C three basic options, one state of boardment was over the jurisdiction, hire the own building official or contact. And so they, so they all discussed it, they, they gave directions to staff to bring back the draft, R F P, to, to the contract services. If they choose to vote that. Oh, no, okay, I bet you won't.
Thank you. Or I'm gonna be supervised.
So during this discussion, Tamara had it, recommend they raise their fees, because the permit fees are the lowest in the area, and the suggestion to raise them was to get the fees the same as the jurisdictions around here. So, and we've had some customers of the Building Department, they reached out to us, and they asked us to try and maintain the building department as it is, and to compromise if we can. So.
That was other counties?
No, that was our customers.
Our customers?
Yep, our Building Department.
So it's just like. Like the, like the Port of Monroe, or the Port and Amazon and people that are down in Hepner, you know, they're accustomed to us being on time and doing a good job. They are concerned that whoever the county would hire, if it's not, you know, if it would be a third party, somebody from the Valley or Ontario or something, that, that time would be not as well, and that it wouldn't, that they just like the service we're getting, and we, I think, I think the issue, part of the issue is that we, we do a good job, this isn't about the job we're doing, it's, it's all about the money, so.
I'm really having to bite my tongue.
Yeah, I, I'm there with you, this.
I'm so sick of the county, I'm sorry.
Well.
They seem like they're trying to rip us off. And if I feel that that's ours place, I'm sorry, but I'll leave it at that, that's where I'm feeling.
Okay, I'm wrong, I think, I think the reason I wanted to bring this back up is 50% of something is still something to us.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, I'm gonna do your presentation. It, it seems to me like that.
You know, that's just your personality.
I'm just gonna be.
Sorry, Glenn.
No, believe me, I haven't been here long enough enough.
And we apologize.
No, but, okay, they, this started, I don't know how many months ago. And, you know, we had the talk with them, and they come back and they won 50% of everything. We pretty much said, well, you guys come back, that's not, we're not gonna go with that. Now that they have given some direction to what they want, we need to be able to save face a bit and go back in, and so I think the ploy is that we do a good job, and the people that we, the customers are happy with us. And so that will be the, the beginning of the conversation, I think, is that, like you say, the port, absolutely. And they've tried to speak to the county, and they're not listening, but we, we still think that if there's enough people, you know, that express an interest to us, that, that we should entertain a, some kind of a different proposal. Okay, we're compromised, yeah, okay, now you can talk.
You have permission, you've been here, you have permission.
Well, you guys, we talked about that this morning.
I bet you, yeah, I bet you did.
So traditionally, you got third party private inspection company, the only ones I'm aware of are in the Valley. So that means you get two days of inspections, maybe, and plan review has to be shipped to the Valley. And that takes extra time, so our customers don't want to have to deal with, they're bottom, dealing with their bottom line and timeframes. So the compromise that we're proposing tonight is that we do a 50 50 split between the county and boardman, building permits on, maintain, retain 100% of all the other fees. And that's, believe me, I, I'm choking that down too, because I'm, I'm rightly, it's just not right. But in a bad political situation, you, if you can.
Are we gonna be able to stay in the black?
Yes, even if the county went the other way, I shouldn't say that, but we would be okay.
So we would retain plan review. And we, the only thing we would be sharing would be building permits, so all other permits. I know the electrical goes, the electrical wall goes to state, right?
That's correct.
So we don't get any of that.
But it's all for the.
And that's the proposal that they're asking for us?
No, the proposal they're asking is, the second page in, this is what they offered us, and this is what I'm on. And the original markup, there's even three more pages back, this is their markup of the original 20 year old.
Well, I really don't want the county to try to run it, because they don't do a very good job on the ground of county anymore.
Page two is their offer and our response.
Ours is the red.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I changed.
Okay.
To your question, yes.
Yeah, sure.
So, from what I remember, it sounded like a lot of the county's worries was centered around, what if you got sick, what if you didn't come to work? Is that still their school of thought, where every, because when I hear Karen say, well, our customers, the people that deal with us are really happy, and so to keep everyone really happy, we need to give a little. And I get it, I get the struggle of the policy, but I also know a lot of the conversation that we had last time, and what people feel, it just is sour to think that we need to cut our money, and we're still doing same amount of work. Have we looked into hiring someone else to be in the department?
To be.
To be a, if you leave, there's someone else there, because if we're doing so good, you know, why, why are we here, you know? Because I kind of feel like I remember a sentence from the county being like, well, you guys have this nest egg, and essentially, we just kind of want that too. I get it, you know, I get it, it's a lot of money, and it's money, I get it, but the problem in the word is, you know, what if Glenn, it's like, what if he this or that? You know, I, I mentioned, and I've spoken with you in between, you know, do we need someone? Would that help, and it feels like it just puts more cards in our favor if we have someone that can aid you and or pick up the work if you're gone.
If we address that argument.
Yes.
If we see and understand what every one of their arguments or point of contention is, how do we address each of those? This one is a bigger one.
Right, and so not to, I'm sorry, Glenn, not to piggyback off that, because you said direction, and you'd said, you'd said that they've given us a direction of what they wanted, you know, and a lot of it seemed like stuff that we were okay with, as far as.
And it's all in, I took nothing out, I just changed three things.
I think.
Well, go ahead, and then I'll. Because I want to respond to your question.
Yes, yes.
So I have a lot of remove, missed a week of work a few weeks ago, the state picked up, because we have an I G A placed with them to cover what went on.
That's the state, not the county.
Right.
The I G A is between the city boardman and Monroe County as a whole, with state building post division. That if I'm unable to perform my tasks, all we have to do is say, can you come and do this, please?
So we have proven in the last month that we have somebody that can step up and fill the obligation. And we are willing to sign an I G A, like you say, with Umatilla or Hood River or somebody, you know, because that was part of their worry, is that, and, and like I say before, when I was looking for Glenn, I didn't have, I didn't have an official I G A, I just called people and said, can you help me out? So they wanted to be in right, and, and there are people that we could easily do that with. And like Glenn says, the state, that's part of their.
No, that's an I G A, we specifically set up with them. We reached out to them and said, would you be able to do this next question?
Yeah.
So I, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. If the state's gonna pick up when we're, when, when Glenn's not available, why do we need to visit this?
That's, okay, Glenn, tell me why this county has the official.
So the, the county, the county is the entity that has officially assumed the building inspection program from the state. It's their program. And they have an I G A, thus, to run it for them. But it's ultimately their program, if they choose, if they chose to go without us, all they have to do is write us a letter of termination, and 90 days later, we'd be back in their lap. So this agreement is to spell out how we're gonna provide services, what they're gonna do to accommodate us, et cetera.
So what you're saying is they got us before they brought the hard place.
Well, but, they still have to do market rate, they can't just take whatever they want, still have to do the market rate agreement, either between us and them, or by whatever entity they want to have, work with it.
It's ultimately their choice who they want to run the program for.
So we can stay competitive by giving a little, and then, and maybe keep all the money in Monroe County. Or if that didn't work, and they decided they wanted to go another way still, they could go out and seek another agreement and share the money with a different company. Or a different entity, or a different entity, or a state.
So if we, if, if, if they're amenable to this, then everything is okay, however, if they say no, we still want more, then what would that be?
That's a good question.
It's kind of, I'm looking for a little bit of direction from you guys on that.
Why didn't we start off with like a 60 40, you know, instead of going straight down the middle, why didn't, you know, since we're lifting the load, and, you know, we're the donkey for the cart here, why didn't we start with being more aggressive on what we want to negotiate?
Because I think this shows good faith, I think we put it off so long that everybody has to, there's a certain amount of saving face in this. And I think that by saying to the county that if we give you 50%, that's what you ask for in the plan review, or, and then nothing's for them, and we keep all the plan review, I think it makes it, it looks like we're trying to be
diplomatic.
Yes, and.
Like we're making a really, a real effort.
A sincere effort, I mean, because, you know, you know, we've all played the negotiation game, where you start high and you go low, and, okay, we've spent, I don't know how many months to live with this.
Six or more.
How many? Six or one, oh, okay, see, long time, so I, and, and Glenn really doesn't want to give up the planning fee, because they don't do anything for that. So I think if we could, and here's the other thing from the customer standpoint, by the way, is that if they would, we really do keep our permit fees low, I mean, when on, on the, she handed out a sheet, and when you get up to being a pretty big job, there's a lot of difference between Umatilla and Hermiston and us, so.
Just looking at, at the mayor's conference, when I was talking to other mayors about their fees, I was totally amazed on how much they charge, I mean, we're talking in the thousands of dollars.
Not $1,300 for $2,000.
For one permit?
Right, I mean, our fee schedule starts at $13, you live in the valley, they start at 300.
It was crazy, I, I was, anyway.
Well, and so that's the, another reason that our customers, I'm sure, would like to see us stay, because, you know, they're from a business sense, if I can bank money all the time, why would I need to raise the rate? You know, I mean, that's, I don't know, you can't kill the golden goose all the time, and this helps, I mean, because I'm, so anyway, I think that's another reason that the people that we do business with all the time.
Oh, it just.
Is a good selling.
This is a quick map, Amazon, the building permits alone for one phase is about $10,000. So if they went up 10%, that's not $1,000.
Well, it makes my skin crawl, but I think we probably need to work with them as best as we can in the attempt, because I think we as city of, of Boardman should try to take care of our customers, even if the county is being stubborn.
See, and I think that's where, when Glenn and I talked about it, and like you say, more people have come, I mean, when he's out doing inspections, more of them are coming and saying, you know, we don't want it, we don't want somebody different, so then that makes us think, well, okay, then, you know, I mean, so I think that, I just hope they will enter, I hope they'll entertain this proposal, you know, because if they don't, I, I don't know.
Do we need a motion?
No.
Oh, we're in a planning, so we can give, do we need to give direction, like, this is what we think should be happening, or what? We approve that you.
Well, I think that you should at least say that we're comfortable with whatever you, with the consensus of what's planned or something.
So I, in this, in this paragraph, it doesn't say building permits, like only permit permits.
It does right here, it says permit fees, does anyone that would say that?
Well, I don't know, I.
So, because there's other permits too.
Right, and it's all on. Sure, so were you going to share those permit fees 50%?
Yes.
Okay, and it doesn't need to be built, I thought you just were doing the whole.
Well, I, sorry about that, because that's my.
Okay, okay, okay.
So you're looking for a consensus, so, do we have a consensus that this is, we want Glenn to keep, and the city to keep working with the, with Mark County, as far as trying to get a negotiation on an acceptable agreement?
Yeah, because we didn't, we didn't want to go out and start negotiating when you guys were pretty firm about holding these, holding the line, but, and, and Glenn, and Glenn's had to take this, I mean, this has been difficult for him.
So I think it's a slap in the face, but, here, let's do more work and you get paid for less, okay, thank you very much. That's how I, that's one way to view it.
So Jackie wrote us that letter, right? And fact checking the whole situation. And then we also had information from other cities and what their intergovernmental agreements would be. And 50 50, the permit fees aligns with that?
No, it would be more.
Oh, so other governments would give more of the.
There are a few, there are a few I G As out there that are really heavily weighted towards the, the, not the jurisdiction provided the service, but the other. But the majority of them is, is 100% or 0%. Because the majority of the entities around here are operated by the state. When you have a state running program, you get zero.
Yeah, but I don't think you're clear.
Oh, yeah, because I, I think that the government agreements that I heard about in Hermiston, you can tell that they were not 100% or 0%.
I'm blown every now.
Me too, so, which is weak.
Well, and I, you know, I, I think, remember I said that something about like, when they had an I G A between like Hermiston and Umatilla, that they were willing to pay Hermiston $80 an hour, and then they split the, and that was for plan reviews. And the 50 50 split, I think, is pretty common, well, maybe not, but if the state does it, then there's nothing, I mean, that's.
And the, and the state does, this county, Umatilla County, one of the misinformations that Tamara provided is that she's here.
Well, the part that makes us probably have to be more negotiating is that they could say that we can somewhat fire you and fire, find somebody else to do the process that we want to have done, which doesn't seem fair, which, then we have to now try to figure out, okay, how do we take care of the people that we need to take care of, and still make sure that we're not doing a service which costs us money because we're giving more access to another entity.
So the way I look at that is if the county's not willing to look out for their people, what? If the county's not willing to look out for their builders and developers. If the county's not willing to look out for their builders and developers, we'll do it. We'll look out for those people.
Brandon has a question, but I'd like to follow her.
Well, Mike, I'm not sure. I missed something that Mr. Cooper said, so I'm kind of a little bit behind, but. My question is about the permit fees. Can the county force us to raise the permit fees?
Their permit fees, if they choose to raise it, they can. So they still could, basically.
Regardless of what happens with the government.
But that. There's gonna be some black eyes here. If the city doesn't get our way. And they would take this money to Umatilla County or somewhere, then, then for sure. There would be some publicity about that. And, and this would be another thing, if they would come along and raise those permit fees. For no reason. I mean, they can, they can most certainly, if they wanted to hire this, they can run their, if they should take this over totally. There's, they can run that department. Just with the amount of money they're making now. Lot of money.
Well, I think, uh, City Manager Pedro kind of said at the beginning is saving face. If we can do everything we can and document everything we can to try to make this. The best possible situation we can. Then if they choose to do something, we don't look like we got the egg on our face. We're like, as a city can least say. To its citizens and to its constituents that, hey, we did this, we tried this, we tried this. We couldn't come to an agreement, but the ultimate decision was this entity. And try to at least save things for us as best as we can, because we made every effort to try to. Reach an, an agreement that was acceptable. That, that's kind of where I think of.
Can I ask my question? And just backing up altogether here, worst case scenario, or maybe not the worst case scenario, but one scenario is if the county takes this over completely. Then, from what I understand, they have. The option to do whatever they want with those permit fees and charge accordingly. What, if they take it over, what do you do? Do you, are you still in your position to do what?
The city of Boardman, Irrigan, and Gillon County.
And that is under what authority?
Under our, well, the city of Boardman has officially assumed the building inspection program from the state.
For those other two.
For the city proper, and we have IGAs with Irrigan and Gillon County.
Okay, so those would stay in place? Okay, and then those fees collected on that. Scope of work, we would retain those a hundred percent still, or is the county trying to control that too?
I know, but Irrigan has the same split, they get twenty five percent of permit fees right now.
Okay.
Uh, and Gillon County, we get a hundred percent of all.
Okay, and that's because we have those agreements in place with that.
So the city municipalities are separate from the county?
The hierarchy goes, the city wants it bad for six. If they don't want it, then the county has to, and if the county doesn't want it, the state has it. So we could not, the city of Boardman could not officially assume program for Moore County.
Well, but, 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 distracting what you're saying now, though, I'm just trying to understand. I'm still not completely clear what their argument is. For making this request.
They're just occasion.
And trying to exhaust all alternatives, but it, to me, comes down to money. And I'm trying to be open minded to figure out what else is their motivation, what am I missing?
Well, I think, and from my perspective, I think the worst part of it is that the money can't be spent on anything but the building fund. So unless they're reinvesting the money in a building inspector, they don't, they can't use the money for anything.
So they could use that money to hire a county building inspector.
Yeah, sure, but why don't they do that now, they got the money to do that now, but.
That's one of their options, one of the three options they.
Sure.
To provide a certain mission.
Okay.
So what I was thinking is they want the money because they're gonna hire somebody.
Well, there, the, the direction they're going on, if you read that first part. Well, option two would be to hire a guy, a building official, and hire a building inspector to underfill his decision and train him.
And then that position can serve us anywhere in, in Moore County, and work and create an IGA anywhere else, right?
If they wanted to have an IGA without the jurisdictions.
And then would that person potentially be able to present an IGA with our current customers? Um, and. Supercede what we have in place already.
Well, the, the Moore County customers that we serve now, if they chose, if the county chose, chose to take their program back. They would no longer be our customers.
So there's risk there if the county takes over more control, that they could potentially take our customers that we have agreements with now. I mean, it's just a standard business model, potentially, you know, if they commit like a different deal.
They could, uh, but knowing people we have, uh, agreements with is, of course, Moore County, Gillon County area. Uh, Aaron Pongus has already told me that he has no interest in going anywhere else. And Gillon County is just so happy to have a building inspector.
We don't have an agreement with customers as, as, as such. Our job.
By those entities are, we are providing this service to those groups now. If the county hires a building inspector, they could very well provide those services in our place.
Yes, well, no, we can't, we will not be able to, if the county takes this over, there, we will only be able to inspect the constituents. We will not be allowed to go out in the county and do inspections anymore.
And Irrigan is off the table then? Okay, so those, those, the city, Irrigan and Gillon County, those would stay in place, they couldn't do anything to. To avoid, go and avoid those IGAs.
They could pursue an IGA with those entities if they chose to.
And so how firm are our agreements with those, is there a certain timeframe, are they easily broken? Is there any sense of security in that?
Easily broke.
Okay, okay, so there's a risk there that we could potentially.
There is, I think it's very minute, though, because Moore County is gonna have, they're gonna be.
Well, and I own immediately called us and wants to go with us, but we, we can't afford to do that.
Sure.
I mean, the deal is that. If, if the county wants this, they're gonna have to do. The little towns down there, because they don't sell enough permits to make it feasible, so. Or we could get, or we could get everybody but, well, we probably couldn't get Hattner, but we, I think we could get I Ho and Lexington, but. There's no reason to do that.
Just always wanted to think about the. Uh, consequences that we're not considering and try to. Cross out every option.
Well, we used to do, uh, Umatilla. We had an IGA with them, and it was a whole different. They, they collected the money and they sent us money. And one day, their new city manager walked into my office and said. I'd like to, I want to quit, and here's your thirty day notice, and that's just how I. And so. So Irrigan, you know, they're starting to sell some permits, but. Now, we understand that. That most of the work is, big work is done in the county, you know, I mean, we understand that, so.
All right, so I think we have a consensus on what we're gonna build. Anybody else have anything they would like to add?
I think for the. For the good of the county, just so you could. If we were to lose the county. I think a couple of things would happen. A, we'd give a black eye in general. The people who work near Boardman don't see themselves as county people, they see themselves as Boardman people. So businesses in the port consider themselves to be businesses in Boardman, and they don't see themselves as businesses in the county. So I think that where we get second black eye about that. And then I think the other one is that. We're not just city people, right? We, we serve all the people in Boardman, and sometimes that means people don't live in the city proper. So in some ways, we have to take a, we have to take a little, the little skin off our finger. To make an agreement. To keep. Everything kind of even, maybe, or happy, or.
Collaborative.
Collaborative, thank you, good. So. While it's, kind of goes against. My sense of justice to give fifty percent of fees to something that is not earning it. It still feels like a cooperative activity. And a compromise, and it's not like.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
Worst case scenario, they're gonna say no. They're gonna stick with their original. And our recourse is what? What about litigation? Is there, is there a venue for us to say, look, Moore County, you're, you're agreed?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that. Primarily because it's, it's their jurisdiction. They went through the process of going through the state, to state, saying, we would like to offer permit services from Moore County. That happened, and then they said, we're gonna have Boardman run it for us.
Okay, so is there any venue for us to, to go to the state and say, you know, we realize what's happening here? We would like to continue and, and possibly get a IGA with the state. Basically, giving the black eye back to Moore County.
Yeah, I, I really is not aware of that.
Just asking.
Well, maybe even just if you did like the nine seventy one, one eight, it's a code area. Just send the state, what if we wanted to just see that? You know, maybe we don't need what happens in the south end, or. You know, on Highway seven thirty, but we'd like to have what happens in codes seven, nine seventy.
Well, the state delineates building code jurisdictions by boundary city and county values.
I see.
Anything else?
Is it clear as mud what you do?
We're moving forward.
Glenn has an idea, what about City Manager Pedro, are you crystal clear?
Well, we're, we're gonna need some problems, so I stop and practice.
Just to confirm. Where, with everything that we, you heard, Glenn, you're just gonna continue on with the fifty fifty and. And we'll go from there, just to confirm, because there's a lot of conversation, and I just want a clear idea of. So what your impression walking away was.
So my impression is that this is a compromise that Boardman's willing to make. And we're gonna submit this to the county. If they say, oh, that, that looks harmful, we'll go ahead and do a finalized draft, and of course, we get sent to our terms and. And then we'll sign on the line, and they'll be fifty fifty and one hundred percent. But until we get a. Letter of termination, it will be the original.
And because, I'm sorry, did I mean to cut you off? Um, and because the county has someone that, that covers you when you work on. Uh, we're not gonna look for anyone else to be added to our works.
The state covers for us.
State, excuse me.
Yeah, sorry. If the county chooses to go with another provider, we don't need another person. So we're gonna have to wait. Well, and just so you know, if, if, uh, the. Seventy eight six six was signed by the governor, and it takes effect January first, twenty twenty, twenty two, two thousand twenty two. And if there, if an entity or jurisdiction does not have a contract in place for that date with a third party provider, they're no longer able to. So they have until the end of the year to get a contract with a third party provider, that makes sense?
So we drag it longer, make it as close to December as possible?
So I'm just clear until I give the camera one.
Also, you might expect the answer to be, thank you for your presentation. We're gonna go ahead and put out the RFP and see what we get. I mean, that would be probably maybe what I think I would get, is that. Because there was some consideration on my part, at least, thinking, maybe I'd let them put out the RFP. See what they think they want. You know, see what they're asking for, and then do our rebuttal, but I think it's smarter if we do our rebuttal to start with. Because they may not want to put up, that may solve their whole problem, you know what I'm saying? But we'll just see.
We have not submitted to the county yet. So it's a good question, knowledge, my intention is the first four pages of this, I'm gonna send to the county tomorrow.
So, okay, we beat that horse. So in your package, I include the first draft of, as we received from the. And so I wanted to kind of talk to you about this. Over, if I. I was hoping you'd have time to read it and maybe make a few notes, anyway. Is the salary about what you're, you're thinking for an assistant? I think when we get ready to hire the. City managers themselves, you're probably going to have to look at between the hundred and ten and the hundred and thirty five. I thought they did a nice job in, uh, the. Description of the ideal candidate, because that's, that is a. That's going to be hard, because a lot of people that are really qualified. Will not want to start out as an assistant. But they clearly say that we're, you're expected to be able to take over the. The, in the next year, so. Um, I thought they did a good job there. The part about. You know, Boardman and what we're doing, uh, we can. Because they, they didn't add. Near enough about. The data centers and stuff, so I'll have them add a little more about that. The part that they highlighted over here in opportunities and challenges. I, the day I sent that in, I couldn't think of any, any challenges. So now I have thought of, of more of that. And I want you to think about it, this is partly what you think you want the new person to be able to do. You know, and. So I think that.
I'd like to get rid of the challenges for. Opportunities, I think would be. I, that's my, uh, challenges kind of seems like threatening or scary.
Right.
Like. Keeping it more. That, that would be a, a good, something. Cause there are a lot of opportunities, this place is about ready to explode.
Yes. Well, and see, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to. Now, public transportation is going to get to be more of an issue in our area. That, you know, after we pass the. The tax will, like, so. Need to have some. Need to have some idea about that. I, on my list over here, I put Lepsy. The chief didn't even turn and give me a glare, anyway.
You said what? C?
Lepsy, L P S.
Oh, let's see.
C C and it's, uh. What is it?
Uh, it's supposed to be lips, you're talking about lipstick, we'll publicly stake the coordinate council.
And it's, it's a, it's a mandated thing that somebody from the city has to be on that board. And so. I, I do that, but I. Most everybody else there is from children's services or the law department or, you know. They all have an expertise that I do not have, they deal with kids and stuff all the time, but anyway. So I would expect them to be able to do that. On the census, I, uh. You know, I told you last meeting, I wasn't happy with the census figures. And I called around and I called the P S U and they answered me and said that they could, uh, I can challenge that. After the first year. So I would expect that to be challenged, I mean, no doubt that somebody better figure that out.
Karen.
We've got the census, huh?
So census data has been returned, but it it's what's collected during a pandemic. So I don't know, I think challenging it makes sense, because I don't know how valid that data is based on the ability to. Collect that data and educate people about submitting the forms, et cetera. And a lot has changed since, and just in the housing community, since then, people have moved here from big cities on a regular basis, though I feel like our numbers aren't going to be valid. If we challenge it, how, can we collect new data?
I can't, I can't take into consideration what's here today, I have to take into consideration what was here in twenty twenty. When they did the census, but you know, Portland State said we had forty nine fifty or so.
Yeah.
Forty nine eighty, and the census said we had thirty eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big discrepancy. And like I say, we've worked a lot with P S U, I think they. I think they feel like, so anyway, I, it's worth, it's worth.
Yeah. Let me use the P S U data for other projects that we did on, right, and just projecting our growth, so I think that would be a source that we can continue to rely on.
Right, oh no, there's a lot, I mean, you know, there were kind of that mixed bag, you know, a lot of times we, like, if we get over five thousand, there'll be a couple of grants we won't be qualified for. But. A lot of other times when we need to show that we're growing and and increasing, yeah, then we do that. But anyway, so that would be on some of this list. And of course, that they would need to be able to work on the press, I mean, have, so I would like to stay on the press board. As long as I'm allowed. For sure, so I hope that you guys, uh, when I start working few hours, I, one of those, one of those few hours is I want to be on the press board. Because.
Would you need to be in a city manager or official position to do so, or could you be a citizen?
They have allowed other people to be there, and so I'm hoping. And and the the positive thing about this is that, uh. Where this would be pres two. And not press three, then. I would have a better chance because they've allowed other, you know, you didn't have to be, uh. A staff or I need to be. I can still be considered some kind of staff person, I'm sure we could figure that out.
Got it.
But. And then urban renewal. You know, I, they, they really need to be. Because, yeah. I can't wait for somebody to start, because I've got lots of projects for them or I to do, so. Well, and it would be great to have them here so that you could do it. You'd have to know something about unit negotiation next year, twenty forty two. I guess what this list is kind of saying is I can't have. I can't entertain a kid that's just first out of college, they're gonna have to have some kind of background. They're gonna have to understand something about franchisees. And how to apply for a grant. So anyway, that's, so if you can think of something else in the next. Day or two, shoot me an email, because I want to, they want to start advertising this, because we need to get on with the process.
Karen, wouldn't there be a different term we could use in place of assistant? Did the. I mean, it's kind of like a president-elect position, that's the person who's gonna follow in.
Right.
I wonder if they have another creative term that might come up.
Well, that would, okay, I, I think we're all, everybody's open for something, yeah.
City manager pro temp. I was just, I said what about pro temp?
Then it finds that it's a short-term job. Versus stepping in and filling some shoes.
Well, that's why I hang in that one, that I had bad for my dad.
City manager.
I'm just curious, some places, the gentleman on the phone call that day. Deputy.
There you go.
That is if they fulfill the duties or meet the qualifications, I mean, or. It's just because you're hired as assistant doesn't mean you're gonna be the next city manager, does it?
No, but I think that we want them to have that expectation.
Yes.
So that they, because I, I don't want to pay. I wouldn't want to pay ninety thousand dollars probably to somebody that. You know, I didn't have a pretty good expectation was gonna catch on and move forward.
I think ninety thousand dollars is a pretty good price to be able to pay for assistant city manager.
I think that, I'm just shocked. At what the wage scale, part of the problem is there's nobody applying anymore. And so, you know, it's just like my own wage, everything's going to happen.
Well, I'm just thinking like of a supervisory role, like a principal or somebody who is in charge of a. Assistance, assistant of, of big corporations or some of those result. I, I think ninety thousand dollars was out of question, I'm not very that way.
Well. And when you add the benefits. When you add your benefits on, it is, you know, I mean, fifty two percent or better is what the benefits take, so, you know, it's, uh.
But I guess if they, if they, if they do, the expectation would be, because our intention is that we're gonna be able to train you to be able to take the decision, but. If you don't cut the mustard, you probably not get.
So I may answer this. And I think you'll know, this is such a personality position to, I mean, you've got to be able to work with the people in the community and. Like I say, with the board of the county and stuff, I'm starting to fail on the county.
So Brenda, before you go, I have a question.
Before we hire somebody, though, I remember, um, for the chief of police, we had like a meeting rate, and I think you had mentioned going through similar motions.
Yeah.
We, by the time we're hiring someone, it, they'll went through those motions, though.
Yes.
So I mean, it's, it's a bad case scenario that we find out at the hiring part that, well, this isn't the first, right? Because we'll have time to be prepared and to filter, okay?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, and I think though, I think the whole process is so important, because I think that you guys need to interact with them more than one time, I'm not gonna. Just bring somebody in here, you know. Say, hey, I have to do that. I think there should be interaction, because everybody kind of has a different deal. So, uh, no, I think that, uh. And I want, I just hope COVID is over enough. That we can have a, a public gathering of some kind, so that you can. People watch, if nothing else, because I can't, I can't watch Junior Draco, his name is the only thing up there, but I can't see. Can't see how he's dressed, I can't see if he smiles when you talk, I can't see anything about him. And that's just not gonna happen.
So. I thought the chief of police meeting rate was a really nice opportunity, I was invited to go and went and I felt like it was nice. Seeing beyond who I knew that had invited me, it was nice meeting everyone that was there.
Brenda, you can, you got to be up for.
That's personality improvement, right there.
I wasn't meaning to put you out of the spot, you were just the guy I didn't use.
So. So Karen, in all honesty. Can one person come in without background in foreman, do what we. So they're not gonna have forty years of history and their connections and they're not gonna know where the resources and the pools are, they're not, they're not gonna have that.
I always have wondered how people do that, how that they come from another community to our community. And, and do that, because I, that was a huge advantage for me. But. If I can, that's part of the reason I wanted to work, I want to work with them a lot, I want to get them out and. You know, try to get them acquainted with people they need to know and want to work with and, yeah.
City manager for, uh. Uzbe, Uzbe, Oregon. Currently came from, uh, Georgia.
I just know that.
He, and I tell you what, that dude, that dude works hard, he had to find out what that community was, he had your own pace, but. He took that big city mentality and massaged it with the small community and what they have done. Oh my gosh, it, it's, it's, now, not everybody can do that, but just because they're not from. Local does not mean that they don't have skills to make this community.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I'm not even familiar with how big Uzbe is, so they're just one city managers or.
Yeah, that means, well, it's Uzbe and North Bend.
So there's probably more than one employee doing part of that job.
The city manager, he has staff.
He has staff.
Yes, he has staff, just like Karen does.
Okay, maybe I'm not saying my question right, because I don't think there's anybody on staff who's, who's doing some of this franchisee stuff. Or the press board, B C A, I mean.
Well, I'm sure you added there's boards and guest field.
Well, okay, so. But that's not staff, so what I'm, I'm wondering about is, and that's what the session's about, right? So I'm wondering if all of the pieces they have placed that you do this with. Can be done by one person, and it's one thing to be in a big, one bit bigger town and have a person come from a big city. But you have staff who are doing grant writing, you have staff who are doing this and that, you have staff doing this and staff doing this. But maybe that's all being done by Karen or.
I know he doesn't have a assistant, I know he doesn't have an assistant.
Well, and that's part of my question eventually here.
Do you need an assistant?
Is, are, are we going to keep the position of as, if this person moves up to be city manager, are we going to try to replace the assistant?
Very good question.
I think we, I think we should hire, Barry's gonna retire, we all know that he, you know, we need to look for a replacement for him. And I think that is a key position. But if I can hire somebody that wants to work as hard as Barry, I can. I think that I probably wouldn't hire an assistant manager, I would be more apt to hire. Somebody actually in the planning department than, you know what I'm saying, that, that in that field, rather than, uh. This, than my position.
Let's see that.
You know, I think, I think that that's where the next real serious conversation comes.
I get dragged in so many directions every day, it's, it's just absolutely crazy.
Well, and that, and that needs to stop. We need to hire somebody that is. Uh, the planning department does the planning department. If we're gonna have a community development, then, then that will be a different job description, but.
By a different reading person, right?
Yes, because if we continue to stay as busy as we are, you can't expect one person to do as many things as, as. We have, we do now, I think.
Well, so it's right back to my question. Is it really a one-person job?
It, it's because I have a staff, I, like Barry and I talk every day, Rick and I talk every day. I think I knocked it up every day.
Yeah, I think what Brenda's saying is, are we planning for growth, are we planning for the future? I mean, because you, you juggle so many, that's all you guys do, but you guys are always gonna be here and not everybody has the same traits. And abilities that you guys do, and so. Might have to look at.
I think you actually continue after night, after you see.
Your candidates, and their personalities and their skills. How much they can actually get done in the same day, same workday.
Well, and, and if. Yeah, it, it's, it's the community that is the issue.
I want to say, some of us have been in foreman for forever, but we do have in some new council members that moved here. And how did they buy into foreman and how did they make all the connections and the resources? And I think that's key to look at when you're looking at this new candidate, are they interested in making connection and needing the resources? And putting in that extra effort, because a lot of those connections come in those volunteer boards, where it's completely separate from their job. It's a different group of people and it's volunteer, are they willing to do that to make those connections? And if they're just, you know, blinders on, I only work when I'm at city hall, everything else I do is not my job, then that's probably not the candidate that we're looking for.
She's so.
So I, I would say, uh, as far as continuing city manager, I think that would probably be a premature assistance, it would be a. Maybe a premature decision, because I'm assuming when you bring in a new city manager, they're gonna, they're gonna make different job assignments, that they very well can change the structure. Of the departments within the city, so you don't know what that's gonna look like, so it's, it's really hard to say. Um, I've been very quiet in, in, in your whole process, but I have to tell you. I'm absolutely sick to my stomach, uh, what we're gonna do when Karen retires. I, I've invested everything in this community, uh, personally. And I know that the wrong person can turn this city upside down. And so I'm asking you to do your due diligence when we hire and make sure that that person's gonna be a good fit. For the organization, for our community, as a port commissioner, I have the same concerns, because. There wasn't always any good rapport between the port and the city, in fact, it was quite rough until Karen took over your city man. So I'm, I'm sick about this, I mean, Karen's been talking about retiring for at least four years and I keep asking her not to. Uh, because this is how worried I am about this, um, I could be gone within a year, uh, letting a person take it over. And that could. Potentially, you know, a lot of other department heads could be leaving, um, it just depends. So this is a very serious venture, um, I hope you take it very serious, uh, I'm concerned.
Well, I am too, and that's why I keep coming back to my question, because I've seen other positions where somebody needs. And they fill in with someone and they just qualify, ten years later, they're filling in with two people, because they think that's what's needed to fill it, that's not getting it. And it's two more people and two more people and two more people, and you've taken something really great, kind of straightened around.
Well, I think that's where our responsibility as well as counselors comes in, that it is part of our responsibility to help. Direct. Who are city manager. If, in the event, somebody comes in and does try and turn things sideways, that's where we need to address it. Before it runs off the rails. Speaking on a fair.
You know, but that's if you still are here.
For sure. For sure.
As a councillor, because our councillors change patterns as well, so it's, it's a big deal.
Absolutely concerned that we're going the wrong way. I don't, I, no, I, I mean.
Do we have a choice?
I, I don't, yeah, I, I.
We need to get somebody trained up before Karen does go there.
I, I think that's.
Either naturally or unnaturally, you know, my choice is mutual.
So I'm just thinking.
Somebody needs to get trained, because even if we find the best person, they're not gonna do that, that, that good a job that Karen ever did.
They're just like, people.
They're, they're gonna do things different. I, I'm sure, every manager does things different.
They'll be great.
Well, my question, or concern is, was Mr. Dirksen's lead, we're not gonna hire somebody to be trained by Mr. Dirksen. We're gonna hire a new superintendent.
Or is there somebody that has been grooming for that?
That I don't know.
And, and I believe that's what's going on.
Well, I feel like that's a wise decision, and we have the opportunity to groom somebody, to put them into position so that they are set up to succeed.
Right, as, as she, as, as most of you who've been in Karen's office, um, whoever takes over's got a lot to learn. Because there's a lot of stuff in there that. Yeah, I mean, so, I think it's a good idea to vet that person and, and brain the man. Uh, I told Karen, I, I, and this is, especially on Karen, I, I'm, I'm not so sure you want to tell them that they're. Next in line, because are they gonna come in with the right mentality and, and think that, well, I'm just gonna write, I should have been telling this person where he leaves, and then I'm gonna take over and do it my way. I mean, uh, is that what you're looking for? It's, it's, it's a tough decision.
Well, and, and on the other flip side of that. Had I known when I came, that I wasn't just gonna be here six months, I would have done things differently from the day I started. And after I'd been here a year or two, and I finally decided, I guess I was staying, that then it was too late. I mean, there was things that you, you just wouldn't ruffle the feathers to do, where if you knew right up front. That this is gonna be my ship, and we're gonna run it this way, and so I, I really want the new person to have. And I think we need, I think we need to leave it open, like you're saying, if we can see that they're not petting it or not our expectation, I don't think that we ought to continue to, uh. Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, evaluate that.
That could make it hard too, who's the hard finding candidate, because I'm thinking the, the board of fire chief. I don't know if that guy would probably come here if he would, I mean, I'm just sort of the flip side, so it could make it more difficult to find the candidate. So hopefully your man will, will be able to find the right person at the right time, the right pride, that this parent fits in.
Well, anyway, I'd like for you to really look at this in the next two days, what is this, two C? So maybe just, just drop me an email and say, look perfect, or man, how did you think about this rules, or something? Because this is gonna go on to, I mean, they, it's like mass made, I tell you, and what was interesting to me is that, because. Now Bronfman sent out, I, I don't know if I brought last night, uh, uh. One of their advertisements, but, uh, usually they, they were about like, they were like. Four pages, you know, two pages at the back, now they've gotten down to, to just one page. But when you go on, where they tell you to go online, and what is the job description and stuff, there's lots more, I mean, there'll be.
There's a better bracket, there's not just this, there's a picture.
Oh, they do pictures and all, all.
Because I think you were talking about it, but.
Yeah, we'll go on, we'll go on right here, but anyway, so.
This is just a meat and potatoes thing.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Just, just for a minute, HR staff, make this one simple. So there's a term called succession plan, and that's, that's what this is, is we're planning for somebody who wants to see Karen. And a lot of times, the best way to do it is to kind of make a plan, it's called, has benchmarks. So this person comes in and you have certain expectations, and then you just kind of evaluate them on the benchmarks as they go along, so it's not like. We're gonna hire somebody, have them here for six months, and promote them to city manager. You want to really make sure that the council's kind of evaluating their performance along with the current city manager, kind of develop a plan for that, that may be. Right, and, and just, that's just my background as HR, it's always documentation, 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 but at the same time. You kind of want to get a good feeling for, are they hitting the benchmarks we've set for this position? Are they, do they have a good grasp of the concepts that we as a council have decided was.
Would you have access to like, sample benchmarks first?
I think, I think, yeah, I can go and open up.
Thank you for that.
Yes. May I recommend that we introduce Jen? This is the first meeting, she's the queen.
Yeah, you might as well. I already, I would like to introduce Jen. She can stand, should she share who she is?
So, my name is Jen, I am the new city reporter slash HR. Why not give you a must-do, like, here, but it's probably good, yes, sorry, please stay and tell it. Somebody's city reporter slash HR, first and foremost, the Boardman, I'm very excited to be here, super excited to meet all of you, and. I do not currently live in Boardman, this has been quite an adventure, it's been a long time. But I'm already making my two-year plan because there are no houses available for sale currently, so it's in works, but yes, I'm very happy to be here to meet all of you.
Well, and you notice she takes orders. She works really fast.
The frost isn't off the pumpkin yet.
No, she's catching on really quickly, because this has been. Yeah, this is kind of, yeah, lots going on, so it's pretty.
So we're at number four, right?
Yes, and so what would the number four say?
Uh, look for the calendar dates for it there.
Yes, look for it, yeah, because Mike, Mike Lees was here today, he's really getting anxious to. Have a goal-setting thing with you guys, and when I talked to some of them, he said the salaries were bad, because children's sports right now.
Yeah.
Tonight, well, and if we, if, because we could start like it. Like you say, at six and be done by nine, or two, or.
How many of these sound good, would be good, Karen?
I'm sorry, what?
How, how would be ideal?
Well. It would be really great, my calendar doesn't have much the last week of the month.
Of what?
Oh, but that makes us turn around and come in the next week.
So you're talking September?
In October, so I don't know, maybe, maybe look at the, at the week of the twentieth through the twenty-fourth.
I like, the twenty-third is open for me because the mayor's conference has canceled.
Okay.
Uh, so that's my only weekend open in October.
The twenty-third is September?
Uh, that's October. We're in September.
We'll get next, twenty-third is Thursday.
Next, oh.
Twenty, the twenty-third is next month.
We're not looking at a Saturday.
Oh, you're not working on a Sa- okay.
No, we're like, I, we were talking about maybe something like this, like on a day and night, where you stay a little bit longer, or you start a little bit earlier.
I. I think Tuesday or Wednesdays are the best for me because I'm working at the high school. For activities, so.
Why don't we just step to a Tuesday, keep it consistent?
I'm available on Tuesdays right now.
So are, do you want to come next week or the week after? Okay, because, okay, if we come the twenty-first, that's a week first time, if we come the twenty-eighth, then it's a week for the next.
We're gonna time yours, so. Do we have time for next Tuesday?
You said we can get it on a Saturday.
Do we have time to get it on a Saturday?
Yeah, I think you only have about forty-eight hours. It's forty-eight hours.
If, if, if this is.
We're just a regular workshop, I don't want to get like, it's twenty-four hours.
Okay, yeah, for this, I'm just doing it for this complete, right? We're not doing a workshop every month.
No, not every month.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want anyone to know that, but I think, I think there's some catching up, but like you say, Mike, uh, because we got good news today. Part of the, part of the permitting has passed on to the next level, so, yeah.
So we're looking five-thirty next Tuesday?
Is that what you want to do next Tuesday?
For this friend?
All right.
We'll get dinner on it? We'll get dinner in.
Yeah, sweet. No, there's, there's only a few things we can do for councillors, but I can buy you a meal if you.
I'll take it.
Well, there's more, there's more.
Is it only gonna be an hour meeting?
No, I want to start, no, it'll be two, two or three.
So you're not out that quick there, but.
I wasn't the one that asked, I answered a silent question about how long it would go till.
I say dinner and ice cream.
Say ice cream?
Yeah.
Dinner and ice cream, but that's not good.
Yeah.
Five-thirty.
I will be in Washington DC all next week. Well, I will help you, I'd like to do this too.
Yeah, so, sorry, George.
Wait, just a minute, you can't be in Washington DC all next week.
I'm not in Washington DC, I'm right up there, it's Mr. Drago.
Junior.
I gotta work. He's probably working too.
That's right, he's gonna be gone.
So the twenty-eighth, maybe? Then we have to double back on, yeah, we see you coming.
Well, we just missed that one.
Well, I know, it doesn't bother me to double back, but.
Why don't we just go until October?
Well, I don't.
We've got too many people that have different things going on.
Who's gonna be gone next week?
Junior, you gonna be around that week?
I will be back that week, I, I will be in Washington DC with my dad for an honor flight, so I'm not, not missing that one for anything, so.
So when are you coming back?
I will be coming back Saturday, the twenty-fifth.
Does anyone have a conflict with Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
No.
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 All right.
So should we do the twenty-eighth, let's, let's.
Same time, same place?
Yes.
Five-thirty?
Yes. And then, and, and if you want the same dinner, just say so.
No, I'm just bringing up a little different.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not the classic same with ourselves.
Do they still have that?
They do if you ask Isaac to get it.
We have to, yeah, we have to.
It's very good, it's very good.
See, and there it is.
Okay, so we got that, we're all done?
Yeah, we're done.
All right, so the meeting is adjourned.
We can have a back and forth and start again.
And we'll start recording.